Hi Jeremiah. So you make quorum for tonight. Ryan's not in, zoomed in yet. So we're gonna do some minutes. I think he can. Can you un, can you unmute yourself Jeremiah?
Yeah, just trying to figure out my, uh, air pause.
Oh, okay. My voice will do that. Tell us when you're ready.
Uh, we can get started. I mean, I'll, uh, I'll figure it out along the way.
All right. Warren, wanna read the minute motions please?
Okay, for the minutes.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to approve the minutes of February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three as written.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, and I'm gonna do a roll call vote right away since you're on Zoom. All those in favor. Jeremiah?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye. Okay, that, uh, minutes of February twenty-eighth are accepted. Mr. Pierce?
I've moved that the Community Planning Commission vote to approve the minutes of March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three as written.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Jeremiah?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden, aye. That passes three and two absences so far. All right. Danielle, what do we have?
Um, everything else on the agenda either, well...
Do we have, do we have anything on, uh, zoning, uh, CBAs?
No.
No CBAs?
We could do the Greens because it's just gonna be, I don't think we gotta...
Yeah, we can, you wanna, you wanna do the Greens?
I, I think we should. I mean, I know it's a modification of a special permit, but I actually think that modifying a special permit, we can do with three votes.
Yeah, this is an old special permit from the sixties, is that correct?
Eighties.
Eighties?
Yeah.
Old enough. Okay.
It's a PUD, I think.
Yeah.
That was a planned unit development.
Yes. Um, so I know that, um, Mr. Vitale is here on the Zoom. Um, I just, just by way of explanation, I, I'd be happy to kinda start this off. It is, um, it's been a request of the Greens for some time now to have a couple of provisions changed in their, um, special permit, which at the time, um, restricted outdoor water usage and also, um, there are some specifications in the Greens, uh, in the master deed for the condominiums that, um, specify how, uh, the communication with the fire department works. Um, that part is not in the special permit, but, uh, the Greens have let us know that it would be helpful for us to address that just to, just to acknowledge that it's okay for, um, them to come to a new agreement with the fire department. The fire chief has weighed in on this, has no issue with it. So, I, and I can let Mr. Vitale explain what the reasoning is for each one, but I do have a memo in the share files from both the fire department and from the water superintendent, um, saying that they did not, did not have concerns about these changes. So, um, Mr. Vitale, if you'd like to...
Is he there?
Yep, he's here.
If I, if I'm, if I'm correct here, the, uh, fire department information, or the, uh, fire department recommendations are not actually part of the special permit.
They're not?
So, so basically, if we, if we agree, I mean, I think probably just a majority would be, uh, okay to change them.
Yeah.
Because they don't follow the special permit.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the questions. Do we need four members for this?
No, we don't.
I don't think that we do.
We don't? It's just three.
Yeah, because the fire department part is a totally separate part. It's not in the, it's not in the PUD docs.
Right, but, but the water is, right?
Yeah, the water is. And actually, the way that I suggested dealing with the fire request is, um, by adding a condition to the special permit to say that they were free to come to an agreement with the fire department. Because otherwise, there's no other way for us to address it. It wasn't in our special permit. Um, I do still think you can do a modification of the special permit with three votes. I don't think you need the four votes to modify, but, um, you know, but both of them would be part of the special permit.
Okay.
In, in the fire protection in the condominium documents, um, just requires town approval. The town water usage, because it's part of the special permit, would require the special permit to be amended. So we need the town's permission on that as well.
So if we have to amend the special permit, we need four, or can we do it with three? That's the question that I have. Danielle, we can do that with three? To amend the special permit?
I would think that you could because it's more of an administrative thing rather than getting a special permit. I think in the past, you have done four votes, and kind of assuming that we would have four tonight, I assumed that we would be able to...
Right, I thought Ryan, well, we could wait, we could hold off on this for Ryan to come. He's saying he's gonna be a little late, but...
He should be on the...
If you bear with us a couple of minutes, sir?
Sure.
He, he just sent a text to me, so... So he's a... We have to vote on planning those for, um, for Deacon Street also.
Um, okay. Uh, let's, maybe we could do something else in the meantime.
Yeah, I think we might wanna do that.
Do something else?
Why don't we, why don't we do something else until?
Okay.
Until we can get, uh...
So the only other thing we really have out there is the ADUs, so...
No, we got, uh, fourteen cockades. We gotta do that and sign plans.
Yeah, but...
It's more signing the plans that takes.
It's just signing the plans?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that, and also, I mean, I can do my updates.
Yeah, do your updates. That would be good.
They're pretty short, um...
Why don't you do that?
Sure. So I just wanted to mention, just in terms of scheduling, um, Debbie has jury duty, grand jury duty. So, um, just for the next three months, like, just so you know what to expect in the office, um, Danielle, I don't know if you wanna explain or if you want me to.
Um, I start, I went this week and I was kept, and I'm going to be doing Wednesday, Thursday, this week, but then the rest of the three months, it's in the Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays. I'm, I, I think I'm gonna try to come after I'm done.
Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, just to try to get some of my things done, so I don't get behind on it.
You're gonna still do our minutes, correct?
Yes.
So you, you, you will come to the Tuesday meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and do the minutes, but?
Yep. Yep.
HR was concerned about us approving that?
They were, yeah, it was somewhat, but, um, we kinda, I talked to, um, her again and I think I'm just gonna wait and see. Because I've been bringing time in that I've come in early and stuff to try to finish up stuff, and nobody has said anything. They leave a little box where you put why you were in the office, so I'm not gonna be using a lot of overtime to do it.
Okay.
It's probably about the same as I have been, so unless they say something, I'm just gonna let it go.
Right.
If they do that, I'll...
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem for that. Do you, Warren?
No.
Um, how about you Jeremiah? You have a problem with, you know, Debbie having to do some OT because of the, the grand jury duty she's serving? Okay. So, well, if, if, if we need to step in?
Yeah.
I can always come down like I do before and just come back.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've all done that before. We've all done that before. All right, so we won't, we'll, we'll...
We gotta take care of it.
Yeah, if we need to, we'll do, deal with it.
So if you're looking for Debbie on a Tuesday, Wednesday or a Thursday, just call me.
Yeah.
So she doesn't have extra to catch up on.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just as far as other updates I wanted to mention, the first two affordable units at Martin's Landing are going to be going, uh, to lottery soon. Um, there will be eight affordable units total, but the two that are ready, um, we expect to see a lottery advertised pretty soon, so, um... And we're gonna start the process of getting those two units placed on our subsidized housing inventory because they are, they're close enough to completion. Um, the Regional Housing Services Office that we're part of that this year is the first year that we're using, um, only consulting, um, it's going very well. Um, they had their first, uh, office hours in North Reading. This is something they do in these other communities. We've never done it here, but they suggested that they do it here quarterly. The consultant just comes into town hall, we advertise it, and they just are here to answer any questions people may have. Just walk-in questions anyone may have about any affordable housing, um, questions, issues, concerns, um, in, in any of the communities that we, that we are in the consortium with. Um, so we had eight residents come in and three more call, um, and the consultant is happy to take calls from anyone who has questions, even if it's outside of those office hours, so I've given out the contacts, um, a little bit. Um, so we'll plan to do that again because it was pretty successful and there seems to be demand.
Okay.
And that's about it for right now.
Nothing happening on Charles Street or anything like that?
Um, got a request to see about getting the off-site bond released.
Oh, really?
So I've been in conversation with, uh, Dave Junior about that. I'll, I'll keep you posted on what he has to say.
Okay. That'd be interesting.
You said the off-site bonds, right?
The off-site work, yes.
So that's, that's the drainage of the street there?
Not the subdivision bond. The subdivision bond isn't going anywhere for...
Right, right, but that, that one that they had to put that extra drain line in behind that house?
Yes.
Was it, I, I don't remember. There was any offsites on the Deerfield end of it, I think, I don't know if, uh...
Not that we were holding for Charles Street.
Yeah.
Um, there was, uh, actually, part of the subdivision bond includes removal of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
That's in the bond.
Yeah, that's in the bond bond.
Yeah.
Right.
But the off-site work was just for the drain line.
She's, and it's just that one drain line?
Just the one drain.
Yeah. And that's, that got completed?
It did, it did, so, I mean...
After a few false starts, they found...
Yeah, yeah, it was a, they done anything on the first time out?
Uh, yeah, well, you know, they eventually got it.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the town did a lot of repair work and so...
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Had to transfer that, so the bond.
Yeah.
So there's about twenty-eight thousand left, so we'll get some input from Dave about whether it's okay.
All right.
It's gone a couple of years, so we've had some good water recently.
Yeah. There was always water coming out of that.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, there was, there was, had to be water in the street draining into that.
In the top of Charles Street, there's all, there's a catch basin that's been there forever since it was on Charles Street, but yeah.
It was always water.
Anytime of year, I mean, how dry it is, water poured into that.
Yeah.
There was, uh, springs up here, so...
Yeah, well, that's what those wetlands down on North Street are from.
Well, I just hope that they, you know, I mean, I hope that they, uh, did all their drainage on the site properly because it's not, once this is all done, you're gonna start to get washouts because there are underground springs here.
Yeah.
Problem area.
Yeah.
So we'll see. Hopefully, that's all been done right. I like what Peter did. I think he addressed it, but, you know, there's a difference between addressing it and getting it properly installed, so...
The engineering and the installation could be two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
I know all about the installation problems.
Yeah.
All right, so what else can we?
We can do Conquest Street, decide to sign the plan.
Yeah, we can just...
Might as well do Conquest. You wanna, wanna read that motion, Mr. Pierce? Excuse me.
Okay, are we ready, we're ready to do this then, or all set?
Yeah, and Jeremiah's there, so he's all ready.
All right. I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to endorse the plans entitled Site Plan fourteen, Conquest Street, Town of North Reading, Assesses Map eighteen, Apostle fifteen, dated two fifteen, twenty twenty-two, Revised five thirteen, twenty twenty-two, drawn by LJR Engineering Incorporated.
Do I have a second Jeremiah?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
This was a special permit too.
This was?
Site plan.
Oh, we can't do that without Ryan.
I think we should hold on that, actually, because...
All right, we're gonna hold on that motion until Mr. Carroll is available.
Because it was a, yeah...
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a subdivision. It was a special permit. So... Let me see. Then we're, we still have eleven minutes before eight o'clock.
Oh, she's watching.
Oh, he's gonna start her.
Yeah.
She's adorable.
Missed them all.
Hey.
I've been there, did that.
I did it too. Did it, did it, did it.
I did it a lot.
You did everything, didn't you?
Do you want to, um, put off the ADUs until we're all here, or is the only thing left on the agenda?
We'll, we'll get a review before it's, where we can, we can... Scoot, folks, folks, we, we do have a meeting going on. It's okay, thank you. We won't, we wouldn't have the public hearing until after town meeting, correct?
Right.
So we got some time. We probably should hold off. We've only got two here, Jeremiah's at home, so...
With the ADU?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the ADUs.
Yeah.
And, and the person with most questions is not attending tonight, so...
Oh, yeah, I think we, the last time we talked about it, we did, I think we solved some of the issues that we had out there, so...
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was asked to make additional edits, so I put all of it into the share file so you could see everything that was done. Um, so there's a new draft. I just wanted...
I think it needs a little more massage, but not much, you know, I mean, at some point, you gotta draw the line anyway, you know?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go out there with something.
And every time I talk to Jerry about it, it's like, well, you know, doing the best we can with, uh, with the restrictions put on us by the state as well as, you know, local.
All right. I texted Ryan to see if he'd get on sooner than later. Because we've got everything done we can do. Because we have to wait for Concord Street and we gotta wait for the Greens, so you need four for that.
Well, at eight o'clock.
And we gotta wait till eight o'clock for Anthony to do that work.
But I'm not sure how much of an update, um...
I don't know. Are they gonna be, Danielle, are they gonna be here or are they gonna be on Zoom for the update?
Actually, I don't know.
Okay.
You don't know?
No, I don't know if they're calling in or if they're coming.
Oh.
Yeah, they didn't tell me.
Okay.
We'll find that out.
Yeah, another wonderful meeting, huh?
Party.
What a wonderful meeting.
Yeah. This is almost a cancelable, but we couldn't, couldn't for that ADU, for the, you know, seventeen...
Who's Dave anyway? Should call him up and say, Dave...
Oh, he's at a concert with his daughters.
He's what?
Daughters at a concert.
Oh. His daughters at a concert.
Ah.
I don't know, I, I don't do all that stuff.
Yes.
I always, I always seem to make all of these.
I probably have the best attendance record of anybody ever.
How many have you missed?
Four, I think.
Four?
Yeah.
I think I missed, I think that's all I've, maybe five.
One of them was the fourth of July, but the meeting was the third of July.
Right, I, yeah, I remember that one. I remember that one, because I think it was last year.
One was away on vacation.
In February.
Yeah, you were, you were leaving.
Yep.
So, and the other two were just...
So... I was sick a couple of times.
I've never missed a beating sick.
But you said it'd be on within ten.
I don't get sick.
You're lucky.
I refuse to...
Well, it actually wasn't really sick. It was my eye.
Oh, yeah.
Remember that? I couldn't come in because of my eye. Sorry, but meetings are important. My eyes are more important. Can't see, can't do much, right? Yeah, I'll let him know. Absolutely. That was already in my, my brain because we, we had talked about it.
Yeah.
That's fine. We have... Six minutes. Kinda tough when you do all your stuff and just got nothing to do. Yeah.
Seven fifty-seven.
That's what I got. Our iPad should be the same because they run off the same clock.
Yeah, that's what I'm running at.
That's my own. This one, if I, I can plug it, within two days it's dead.
Yeah.
So I forgot to plug it in tonight. I'm only at eighty percent. I plugged it in at like five thirteen, five fifteen, and I'm at eighty percent.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's tough. Would've been nice if they had Gabe and Steve, um, bigger battery, we used to like that.
I have, I have trouble with mine.
Well, I use mine a lot.
I don't. I use my laptop.
That's, that might be why. I was using laptop instead. You know, I don't, I use, I use the iPad. And this, this new, uh, reader that they have. Remember the old one we used to use? It's much quicker than this thing. It's meant for...
Mine's pretty good. I, I don't really have too much trouble, but I don't have a lot in it either.
I don't have nothing in this. It's only, it's only the stuff that was put in here.
Yeah, it's only, only this is all I got.
You know, everything in here is what was put in here.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I haven't added anything. I got my emails, some emails, even that's outdated, but when I update my email and, you know, change the password, I never change it in here, so...
Yes, you don't get them.
I don't care. I have them on my phone. I got everything on my phone and plus I got, you know, my laptop.
Thank you.
I get everything. I have my new truck up, so...
Yeah, I know the red one.
Yeah.
And you can start out with that, right?
Yeah, but it could, it's just gonna be called my phone all the time.
Does it?
Yeah, tell somebody, uh, like, tell me this, tell me that, you know, we have this new bomb, this thing. Listen and all eat.
Yeah. It's crazy.
Thank you, call back later.
See, I can get, I can get all my texts on my iPad, my personal iPad, but I can't on my phone. But I don't know who some people are. Like, I didn't know that was Ryan.
Yeah.
Phone number, it's in my phone, but not all those contacts that go over there. And that's okay too, yeah.
Yeah.
I got you in here. Warren? Comes right up, and that's all it is, Warren Pete. That's what you, that's how you hear my phone.
Eight o'clock if you wanna stop.
Is it? All right, being eight o'clock. Do we have a representative for seventeen? Ah, there he is. The microphone right there. So folks, this meeting is being recorded, uh, and if you need to speak, raise your hand and I'll... Recognize you and you'll have to come to this microphone to speak, okay? Your name, sir?
Uh, Tom Schaumberg of Civil Design Consultants.
Go ahead.
Um, at, at the moment, we have no new plans to present. We have received, uh, peer department reviews. We've taken the last few weeks to thoroughly address the comments. We've additionally hosted a meeting with the Butters to hear their concerns and are working to address those as well. We expect to have revised plans submitted and reviewed hopefully prior to the next, uh, meeting.
That was one of my questions. Four eighteen is our next meeting. That's April eighteenth?
Yes.
Are you folks gonna be ready for that? Because the next meeting is not until February the tw- February the tenth, right? Oh, May, sorry, not, not February.
Because of the town election, so...
Yeah, we have a town election on our May the second, which would be our normal meeting night.
So May sixteenth is the meeting after that?
Yeah, May sixteenth, right.
Okay.
So it's either, it's either April eighteenth or then we go to May sixteenth.
Okay.
All right? We do have some housekeeping things. So you have nothing, absolutely nothing new?
Nothing new, sure.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, have you, um, have, have you made out with the power company as far as easements and the access?
Power company, um, the last revision, read the last letter that we got from them, um, Vegas requested a, um, a less steep...
I'm sorry, please speak up.
Sorry, the last revision from National Grid was, um, they requested a less steep, uh, access drive from the cul-de-sac into the easement. Um, that's, again, gonna be addressed in the upcoming submission.
So they, so they really, so you really don't have any approval from them yet to continue?
No, so, uh, my, our understanding is that, uh, National Grid will not issue a formal approval in the aisle until we've gone through all the processes here.
So we have to issue a... Yeah, that's kinda...
We, we adjust that with some of the correspondence from town council when the application first came in. Um, and we were advised to just accept the application and review it because there was no reason to not review it. Uh, we have to review it if it comes in, but if any approvals would be contingent on receiving all of the remaining, um, approvals that are needed, including from National Grid. So if National Grid, which I, we were, we saw the correspondence from National Grid, they're, they're not going to complete a review until they have local approvals, if they have.
Okay.
But one of the requirements on subdivision approval is that you have permission... But one of the requirements on subdivision approval is that you have permission to either own the control property that you're subdividing.
Right, but because it's an easement and not a piece of, I mean, I think that's why town council told us that we should review it, um, because it's just an easement, and National Grid does not have to sign the subdivision application. Because they're just an easement holder. I, I that was the correspondence from the first one, when we first opened.
It's still part of the subdivision, that was like, you know.
Sir? Can you just, if you share that mic with them?
Sorry, uh, I'm Joe Cataldo on the applicant. The National Grid, we were dealing with them for about a year and a half, and they tenderly agreed to the plan going forward, but they wouldn't sign off on it until after the review, but they it was indication that they're fine with it, but one previously submitted and they're gonna make the changes, but so they were okay with the roadway, I think that might be the way of the left plan.
Okay.
And they gave you, did you give, did they give you like something in writing saying that that's their position?
It was all verbal.
Uh, I believe they gave a letter indicating that they wouldn't sign off on anything until after the planning board.
It's kinda hard to approve something with a contingency like that.
Yeah.
Cause they don't control it, you know? That's, that's basically what the, the, uh, KMP said, am I correct, Danielle?
They told us to, but they advised us to accept the application and review it.
And review it, but we can't.
And, and issue an approval.
We can issue an approval.
If, if we approve it, I mean, if we.
If, or denial.
Or denial.
One or the other. With denial, it would, it wouldn't be, um, it would just be our denial. But if, if we do an approval, it'll be continued upon National Grid accepting and accepting the roadway and allowing that to happen, is that correct, across the easement?
It would be contingent on National Grid approvals, I don't know what all of National Grid approvals are that would need to be given, but whatever National Grid approvals are required. Unless, the only reason why we would deny it for that reason, or not review it for that reason, would be if we were sure National Grid had already denied it and would not be getting approvals.
Okay.
That, that gets you back to my question about, do you have anything in writing?
Excuse me? Please mute your computers if you're not actively in the conversation, thank you.
So, um you don't, they didn't give you anything in writing that says that this is the, this is the stand they're taking?
So we have email correspondence, um, which I, I believe was uploaded?
Yeah, it was in the February twenty eighth share file, the whole correspondence thread with, um, the summary from what KP told us, if you go back from the meeting that was first opened, um.
Yeah, I'm there right now, I
Those, are those email, uh, but who are those emails from, those emails from National Grid to them? Or, okay.
I mean, all we could show in writing is that National Grid is aware of the application, but they, they won't give any kind of approval, right now.
But they haven't said in so many words that if it gets approved here, that they're okay with it?
No, not to us, anyway. I don't see one in the correspondence, just that they're aware of it, I think they'll finish the review if, you know, pending whatever, um, you know, you decide.
Warren. Uh, Eichman. Went in on this and has a paragraph on National Grid, if you want to read that, February twenty eighth. Okay? Just so you could, and I know, I know.
Sounds like you're on a limb here, you know?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, they don't really you can do a lot of, lot of work and still say, get a note from them. And I know what you're looking at, you're trying to you're trying to help them out.
Yeah. We go through this whole thing.
Yeah.
The, um they'll actually be able to, if it gets approved, they'd actually be able to do something.
Right. Jeremiah, do you have any comments?
Uh, I'm in, no, not really.
Okay. That's alright.
I mean, I, I second, I second you guys' thoughts, I mean, uh, some awkward kind of carpet horse, horse kind of thing, but.
Yeah. It's kinda like I don't know where to go with it. Okay.
I mean, I, do you have, do you, I don't know if you want me to read off, but sure, okay. As to National Grid, they do not need to sign the application as owner, as I understand it, they hold an easement in the subdivision property. Your regulations are clear that all relevant easements have to be shown on the plan, and the board may take those easements into account in determining whether to approve the plan, and if so, with what conditions. If the board determines that National Grid approval is required, the board can decide whether such approval is required to approve the plan, or if approval can be granted subject to a condition requiring National Grid approval before construction may commence. I recommend the latter option, assuming National Grid approval cannot be obtained prior, prior to plan approval, as appears to be the case. The risk is on the applicant, the National Grid will approve what the board has approved. I do not recommend denying approval because National Grid approval has not been obtained unless there is clear evidence that the plans will not obtain National Grid approval.
Can read the National Grid's correspondence to the applicant?
That correspondence, it, it is on our website, but it's also, I mean, it's
It, it really isn't germane for tonight.
It's many, many pages.
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's a lot, it's a lot to read out, so.
Well, they had some problems with the roadway.
Sir, 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 so you gotta come up to the mic and let me know your name and address, please.
Bruce Reynolds, twenty seven Mohawk.
You're, you're in Andover, correct?
Andover, yes.
Okay.
I read the email, um, there's a couple emails back, they went back and forth. The intention was, they weren't happy with the detention forms where they were located, and they weren't happy with the roadway delineation. I just need to make that clear, even though he's portraying that they're happy with it, that email clearly states that they're not happy where the detention forms are, or the direction of the roadway. So, I think you're sort of misrepresenting that National Grid is happy with this.
It never claimed to be happy with it, I've said that.
Alright, let's, let's not get into an argument, that, that, thank you, thank you very much.
I, I recall that, that part away.
We forgot all those things.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
Sir?
I'm Joe Cataldo. Um, we were going back and forth for about a year and a half, they weren't happy with, we had two detention forms in the easement at first, and they asked us to limit it to one, and that's why we went to one larger one.
Okay. So, so back and forth process with National Grid trying to get, um, a final approval that they are.
And, you know, basically what Warren is trying to point out is, is we our legal expert said that we can accept your, you know the filing, but when we go to, if, if it's approved, it's gonna have that condition, and so you're still at jeopardy for National Grid saying, no, they may say, you gotta do this, you're gonna have to come back to us for changes. You know, it's just not gonna be an easy change. Um, so.
I believe that the last correspondence that I had with National Grid, and I can forward this along to Danielle as well.
That would be you should always, anything from National Grid, you should forward to Danielle, so we can get it in our records.
We usually, they would want to have, uh, you know, a, a stamp approved plan prior to them moving forward with reviewing.
It's gonna be kinda hard. Cause the approved plan will be with a condition on it.
Right. Well, I don't think, but the condition would be them, not
Yeah.
You know, so I don't, so, that's a condition they're in control of, so I'm not terribly concerned about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's, it's not our issue.
Yeah.
It's not our issue.
But it still means that the whole, the whole project is in jeopardy until, um until, uh, uh, National Grid says yes, says, okay.
Right. To whatever and, that's if it happens.
I don't say you have anything new tonight, but it's good that we talked about this a little bit, I would recommend, though, that as you go forward with this, that you stay uh, in touch with such, with a contact person of some kind at National Grid, continue to give them any updates that you do, uh, to this plan to, um, make sure that you don't get you know, nine tenths of the way, have them say, well, we don't think we like this now.
Alright. Yes, sir? I thought you was pointing at the screen, I've been looking up there.
It's February twenty five Anthony Road, I'm one of the Butters. I, I don't know what the timeframe on some of these letters are, but in nineteen eighty six, when we went through this process before, there was a letter from National Grid because the plan involved a roadway crossing easement, and I believe I, I put together a packet, and it must be in file somewhere, of that letter and, uh, and what National Grid said, that they were opposed to anything crossing near easement. Because that, that area is landlocked now, it wasn't a long time ago, you could enter it through Havel Street, but, uh, the, the last building three forty six, the Cook's Property, uh, I believe at the time when that was agreed to, that was the last property to be built and the agreement was that the rest of the property would remain part of the aquifer, part of the, uh, the town open space. So, I don't, I don't know if, uh, National Grid understands that the property is landlocked, without the roadway coming across, and it's coming across diagonally. And what I think could, could possibly happen, if National Grid, let's say the project goes through, roadway is there, National Grid decides that they're gonna use that easement. What if one of their stanchions or towers lands on the roadway? What happens to the five people up, you know, the five houses up the street? There's no other way unless they're able to capture another house and rip it down and build a roadway into there. I, it's kinda hokey that National Grid would hold back, I, I think they need their, their approval first. And in nineteen eighty six, they shot the whole.
Yeah, that, and I, I understand what you're saying, that's almost forty years ago, I don't know if they've changed their standards at all, I don't think we have changed ours.
Well, I know the trees, I know the, some of the power companies, I know there's like, there's a whole piece of land up on Model Head Street that the, uh, power company just one day said, nah, we're not gonna do anything with it, just dump.
Sell it.
Yeah, they sold it, they didn't care, they said, yeah, we're never gonna do anything with it, so they sold it, so whether or not this piece of property has any value to them ultimately or not, is a, is a question, cause isn't there a piece of property on the other side of the street there that belonged to them that they're selling?
Downfather. There is, it's downfather, they're not gonna sell it, it's awful wet.
Yeah, 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 but it, but again, they, you know, that would be a piece of property that might be incidental to this piece of property, they're making the selling it, so I'm not sure how important this piece of property is to them, my concern more is, you know, whether or not the, um whether the Afrikaners actually has control of the, of the property that they're subdividing or developing, that was really the concern.
Yeah.
Well, even during the debate back then, uh, the Digivani's property has access from Havel Street. When their property sits right on the, the line of Andover. And Andover would not let him just make a driveway to go off onto, uh, that small road that's there.
I remember these applications, I do remember.
So, there's a lot of history to this, and it's been, you know, we've heard on the block a number of times.
I've seen most of it.
Yeah.
And I've become sort of a historian, a keeper of the facts.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I have a pretty good memory.
Yes, you do. So, uh.
I wasn't here in eighty six, but I was
You were probably just a kid in ice.
Uh, no, I wasn't actually.
Alright, so, but all you did is put weight to my, my charge to you to, to make sure that they're looking at what you're looking at all along, because you don't wanna find the last minute to say, oh, we didn't realize the road goes across the easement, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be very bad.
Make sure that you're not, uh, going down a rabbit hole here. Hey, um, can I ask for any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions? Yes, ma'am. To the microphone, please. Is there anybody on Zoom, put your hand up if you'd like to speak, and there's a little button on your computer screen. Yes, ma'am, your name and address?
Andrea Pellyuka, fifteen Anthony Road. We are a direct Abutter to the vacant lot. My husband and I are the ones who had a civil engineer
Right.
look at the plans in relation to our property. And we've seen that letter, it was referenced in the, in the last meeting, and we appreciate your view of that, and your consideration of all of our concerns. There are probably forty-three homes on Anthony Road, and maybe another forty on Peter Road, so we're looking at eighty plus, give or take, families on these two roads that will be impacted
Well, then you got
by this project.
Right.
In North Reading.
In North Reading. Then you got Andover in Mohawk.
If you are elected by North Reading residents, and you are here, um, on behalf of the constituents of North Reading, and you also take into consideration the concerns of your neighbors, our neighbors in North Reading behind us on Mohawk Road. We're talking about hundreds of people who will be impacted by these plans for, I don't know how many years, three, six, ten? How long will these homes take to be built, how long will the road take to be built? Um, if you're familiar with Anthony Road and Peter Road, and you've only been there a few months, and you see families walking up and down the streets all the time, young children, people walking their dogs, apparently everybody got a dog in the pandemic. People walk around, it's a lovely, lovely neighborhood, apparently people drop off their children up there for Halloween every year. This neighborhood will be impacted by construction for years. There will be trucks coming and going, there will be dust in the air, there will be blasting perhaps, there will be drilling, there is so much ledge in this area. We actually just had a front street put in last week because we've had water issues. There was so much ledge behind the foundation, we actually had no footing to our foundation and had to add one, and we've been told by other neighbors that many of the homes on this road do not have footings. If there is more water that comes down underneath these foundations, that is a huge problem for these homes. Forget water in basements, water in yards, if you have foundation issues for these homes you know, I ask that you take this into consideration, you have a huge responsibility here for these families that are already situated in North Reading. We're talking about five homes by a developer outside of North Reading with all due respect. What's the cost benefit analysis here? Somebody asked in the Butters meeting at Hillview Country Club, what's the recourse down the road? What is the recourse down the road if the retention detention forms are not taken care of? Who do we go to, do we go to the town, do we go to D P W? If those start to leak, if the plastic gives way, if trees break into that plastic, and water comes into our backyard, septic, if that drains into our backyard, if that drains into our leaching field, that's raised because there's so much ledge everywhere. Who do we go to, where do we go? What's the recourse in ten years when there's water issues everywhere? What do all of our neighbors do when there's water in their basements, their yards, their foundations crack? I ask that you take these into consideration, I know National Grid is a huge deal, but our concerns are a big deal. I've only been there three months, and it's, the water is such a huge issue, we have puddles.
Ma'am, ma'am, we, we, we know the water, this is not the first time this project has been here, Warren and I have seen this, how many times have you seen it, Warren?
Yeah, I don't know, a couple, two, three times.
You've probably seen, I've seen it twice, this is my second time. Okay? There, there's one thing that we look at. Just, there's a whole bunch of neighbors, maybe a hundred families. But, there's someone that owns property, and it's their right to develop the property. One way, and I've always said this to people who come in, and they're looking at a five, six, seven, maybe ten lot subdivision the only way to stop the subdivision legally is to buy that property. Okay? Now, it's not, like, it couldn't be done, but it's a lot of money out of people's pockets. And it would be the neighborhood that would have to kinda buy it, you could make a park out of it, or whatever, and I'm not suggesting you do that, but that's the only way that you can do that, we have a, we have an obligation to you folks to make sure, as far as we can tell, what the subdivision is. what the subdivision is, a subdivision is going to do and impact the neighborhood. But the people who own that property have the right to develop that property, okay? So, and it's not like what you just said didn't fall on deaf ears. We, we listened to all what you said, and it's absolutely everything we knew about. There is all kind of water in here. There's ledge in here, and there's, there's, you know, there's reasons why this happens. So, I was just trying to let you know that.
Go ahead.
And one of the, it's, it's a, um, it's, they don't just get to go in and start to get hold and put stuff in. There's a lot of engineering that goes into it. And in that engineering, in the subdivision control law, is the requirement that post-development, in other words, when it's all done, that the runoff from the property, the water that leaves the property, is the same or less than what it was before the development's done. And they have to prove that, that they, that that's the case by identifying the catchment areas, where the water's going, so forth. And we've also had situations where, um, the installation of a, of a subdivision, where they put the detention ponds and actually controlled the water, lessened the amount of water that the people had at their homes. So, uh, you could, there's, there could be a benefit to it as well. But at very least, they need to meet the code that says that when they're all done, that their engineering proves that they're, that there's, uh, the same or less runoff from that site than there was prior to development. So, if that doesn't happen, that does open them up to, to some kind of level of liability. And, but it's civil liability. It's not through the town. It would be civil liability from the people who own the property that are being affected back to the developer. Okay, that's how it would work.
Okay.
So, I do have a question actually regarding what you said about, um, purchasing the property. I noticed the city of P V bought property from, uh, a developer recently, a past month or two ago, it was in the Globe. And I think they intend to turn it into conservation land. Have North Reading ever considered that with this property?
They've done, well, not with this property, but they've done it with other properties.
Yeah. North Reading doesn't normally buy the property because we don't have the money to do that.
Interest of the park is probably one of the best examples.
Yeah.
That was gonna be a huge multi-family development. But the, but the group that got together, raised the funds, petitioned the town, and bought that and gave us that park that we have now. So, that didn't happen because the town decided to buy it. It happened because a large group of people got together and said, we need to, we, we need to hold on to this piece of property. It's, it's too valuable, has open space and has a park, to let somebody build in it. And so, they, it was actually a subdivision, three quarters of the way approved for that when they, when they did this. So, it pushed the price up, but they didn't stop. And, and you go down there now, it's a beautiful place, and that's what they did. So, so it's not impossible, but it's very rarely done by the towns directly. It's usually the L C or one of the groups that, that decide that this property has a better and higher use and they can, make it happen.
I have another question regarding the lot. Uh, it's quite elevated. I know there are in the plans that there's talk of lowering it by four feet at some point and then two feet by another point. It's my understanding about ten years ago, give or take, that a lot of dirt was brought in, um, to this lot when the home was raised. And I would respectfully request that that dirt be tested. I have serious concerns about that dirt, given that it's right adjacent to our lot and we have a lot of runoff coming into our yard. It's kinda strange that dirt was brought in from who knows where, um, uh, by the Germon family. I, like I said, I am very concerned about that dirt, where it came from. And I would respectfully request that North Reading test that dirt before any plans.
No, we, we can't test that dirt. It's on private property.
Yeah, I think that, um, you'd have to have some proof, uh, some, uh, proof that there was, perhaps, that it perhaps came from someplace that was contaminated. Just to go around testing somebody's land on property, somebody's property, probably it's not gonna, uh, I, I imagine town council might have trouble with that.
Yeah.
Us doing that, unless you said, I have paperwork to show that it came from a contaminated site. Now, now that would be, uh, and board health would probably get involved. That would be reason enough to test it. But without some kind of, uh, some kind of proof, you couldn't just, I don't think it's.
Commercial property, you did that, different versus residential property, or do commercial property have to be tested prior to any sort of digging?
Well, it really depends. There's, there's what they, you know, um, there is requirements, but there are, it's, it's a tiered set of requirements. There's three levels of requirements for that. But, uh, and it really depends on the history of the property. If the, if the property has no history of contamination, then it's basically a historical, you know, written paper, historical paper that would be done by an L S P, licensed site professional that would do that. And you wouldn't get into digging up the dirt or drilling holes or anything like that unless there was clearly a history of some kind. He said that the contamination could have happened. And you're talking about where the site came from, obviously not that site directly. So, you don't know where the dirt came from, so it'd be pretty hard to, to, uh, to convince somebody that there's something wrong, you know?
So, what's going on tonight is we have to continue this public hearing, where we, hopefully they'll come back with some real information for us. Um, all your folks' comments have been.
Recorded.
Recorded and listened to.
Yeah.
We'll get minutes on them. Um, we did get the history, cause I read a whole bunch of that.
We also need to do the vote to extend the deadline.
And we have to extend the deadline for a decision. So, there's two votes we need tonight. So, um, I think Ryan is on. Mr. Carroll, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Would you like Mr. Pierce to read the, uh, motions for this?
Chris.
I'd appreciate that.
Make sure you have any more questions. It'll be the public hearing.
Okay, I can do that. Are there any more questions first? Okay. Sir, are you first?
Fran Hashi, seven Wyoming. And nobody's using my microphone.
Well, it's not that. You, you're actually on television and, and Zoom, so everybody has to hear you.
I'm making a joke.
Can they hear you?
My question is, is from a procedural standpoint.
Just put it in front of you. There you go.
From a procedural standpoint, as Andrea said, that we had a meeting with the developer, get our input to him. And I assume he took that into consideration, is proposing some changes. And I'd like to ask him, are these changes superficial changes? Are they in-depth changes? What's the magnitude of these changes? And if there is a, a magnitude that is significant, shouldn't the process be for them to rescind their application, go through the process? When they're ready to really submit, go through another definitive client subdivision with notification of all the Butters? Shouldn't that be the process?
Well, we're still in an open public hearing, and normally, they can come in with changes. It depends on how big the changes are.
That's my question.
Well.
Many of, Fran's been on the board, so he knows his stuff. A history. Yeah, I, I don't know. I think that this, and this, this is a little bit of an odd case because of the, uh, the National Grid thing and everything, so. Uh, but again, that's why we went to town council to see, uh, to get our best recommendation. And if we're gonna pay these guys, we gotta listen to them. So, um, so I guess that's the road we're following right now, Fran. We're trying to, um, get them to provide us with enough information so we can look at the possibility of an approval and that they can take back to National Grid. Cause again, I think that they're out on a limb here, but, um, and I think you probably think that too, so.
I, I think it's very important that the notification process to your Butters is adhered to.
Right. We'll take, we'll, I'm sure we're gonna do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I, I just wanna be clear. We only re-notify if there's a new public hearing to advertise. It's, we, we don't do a second public notice, so I don't want people to expect you to one.
But it's in the, it'll be in the transcript that you, each week, the agenda for the meeting, so it's not, it's available to you. You can also get the agenda by calling down to the planning office if you have questions.
Or looking at it online.
Definitely look at, look online and look at the town clerk's posting because the agenda is at the option of the transcript. They almost always publish it, but they don't always publish it, and it's not a guarantee of season paper. So, definitely check the meeting agendas online and the town clerk or all planning offices.
Uh, the computer age.
Yes. Sir, your name and address again, please?
Yes, Bruce Reynolds, forty-seven Mohawk Road in Andover. Um, they've asked for some waivers. What is the reason for the waivers? There's usually gonna be a reason for the waivers. Nobody's addressed that at all at any of the meetings. Why are we asking for waivers?
I haven't even, I haven't even.
You haven't seen any waivers?
Seen the waivers from them yet.
It was in the initial.
Well, it may, it may have been, and we're going through that. And now that they're coming back with different plans, they may have different waivers.
Oh, okay.
So, we look at the waivers after everything else is done, basically. We're gonna, we're gonna design this the way to follow the regulations that we have.
Okay.
And if they're gonna vary from those, those regulations, then they have to come in with a waiver. And it's like a, a waiver that almost everybody asks for, and that's for, I think it's the electrical distribution from R M L D, not National Grid, um, on how they run the electricity through the street.
They won't do it.
And, and R M L D will not do it until they have the subdivision done, the street done, not done, but all drawn up. And then they take those plans.
It's similar to what National Grid is. We wanna see the final outlook before we decide.
Right, well, R M L D is gonna tell them where the things are gonna be, once they know how the street is designed. We don't normally, we don't hold for that, okay? They have, unless they're not gonna put electricity in the, in the street, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna go for that. You follow what I'm saying? So, that's kind of a, that's, that's one of those waivers that we give as a norm. Other waivers, it's, they're not norms. We review every one of them.
Okay, well, they had asked for waivers in the initial thing, but you're saying until they come up with a definitive.
Exactly. Until, until we're pretty close, then we'll find out what their waivers are and we'll, we'll look at them then.
Well, they were advertised in the initial filing that they're looking for waivers, but you're saying, until we get the final plan, we're not gonna waste our time.
Exactly.
We don't always, we don't always give the waivers.
Yeah.
What?
We don't always give the waivers.
If we don't think they're, if we don't think they're right.
Is, can you clarify why you, why would somebody ask for a waiver?
Well, one of the examples would be water looping. If the water loop that they're gonna put in, it only cuts out about three hundred feet of pipe, it's strictly a waste of time. However, what we would do instead is have them put that pipe someplace where we need it. Something like that. So, while they wouldn't have to do it there, there'd be some commensurate thing that would be done.
Well, that, that was one of the things they asked for, was a wa- water looping waiver.
Yeah.
And to me, you're, you're, the water department or board of health determines what should be actually done.
Well, it's in the, it's in the code that if it's a, if the street's over five hundred feet, you gotta do it, so. And everybody says it's for water quality, but, uh, Elm Street is a three or four mile dead end. So, I mean, and it still gets good water down there, so. Well, since they put the new, new tower up.
Yeah.
But, uh, but in, in other words, we put it in there to try to make sure it, it's like a safety valve. So, if, 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 uh, we had a water main break and a fire at the same time, we had to shut it off right here, we got water coming in from this end.
From another location.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, that's what I'm getting at.
But if it's only a few hundred feet or only five hundred feet of looping, there's already another height within five hundred feet. So, again, it's a senseless amount of money. We'd rather put the money into something that benefits more people.
Once they put, it might be a cost to put the pipe in the ground, but it's a cost to maintain the pipe.
Yeah, the maintenance.
So, you, you gotta, we, we kinda look at it both ways.
Yeah.
Okay, so you take input from your water department?
Oh, yeah. We have input from the water. We get all those, they, they, they opine on that for us.
Yeah.
We ask them that question.
And they, and more than a few times, they've indicated that they would prefer that we didn't loop it, so.
Okay.
Okay, no, no, I'm just.
No, no, that, that's fine. That's fine.
I just didn't know whether it's a financial hardship is what it's.
Oh, yeah.
I'm finding about, or whether it's no need for, or.
Financial hardship, when you're putting a subdivision in, is kinda difficult to.
To prove, yeah.
To prove.
Okay.
And, and for us, you know, you know, you, you, you should know what you were getting into originally. You know, it's not like all these rules and how you go about them are not written down and been done for years in this town.
Well, they're asking you basically with a hardship, this change of rules have already been established.
Right.
Let's be honest, rules were established for a reason.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Yep.
All right, so. Yes, ma'am. Is there something different?
Yeah.
Okay. Your name and address, please?
Joey and Herrick, forty-three Anthony Road. I'm at the very end.
Okay.
Question, you said that they're not supposed to make the water problem worse. Who determines if they make the water problem worse? The fancy engineer plans or the people that are actually living in it?
No, they, um, they're required to do an, an evaluation of the site as it exists. And, um, those, uh, what, those calculations, those drainage calculations are reviewed by a peer engineer or by, it used to have the town engineer do, but I think we do them all with a peer engineer now.
Yes.
And so, the peer engineer will review those calculations done by them and approves them or recommend changes, modifications of them, until they're happy with what the current watershed looks like and where the water's going. That becomes a standard. So, even when they're, when, when the subdivision is done, if it doesn't work the way it is the way it's supposed to, then obviously they're, they're held to account for it.
I guess I don't get how they would see that when they don't live it. You know what I mean? We live it. We get, when we can't go in our backyards because there's a big pile of water that's not draining, or that the river is up so high, I guess, I don't understand that.
Well, if that's an existing situation, that would be an existing situation. That would be under the existing conditions.
But what if it gets worse? That's my big concern.
Well, again, that's when.
They're supposed to not make it worse.
That's right.
And now, and they help, they're holding this in a trust, so you said that the responsibility would be on them. It won't be because it's in a trust, so you can't even sue them.
Um, I don't know if that's true.
You think all the legal people said that is true?
Okay.
And they want you to approve the plan, subject to the rules of National Grid. So, if you approve the plan and National Grid doesn't like it, then do we have to do this again? Because does the town not approve it again?
If.
If there are changes made.
By National Grid?
If the changes made as a result of requirements by National Grid, you'd have to go back here a year.
All right.
Yep.
That's it?
It's just not one and done if that happens. Are there any other questions?
Can you ask the developer what changes these proposals, does that mean if they're significant or not?
Well, do you.
We could ask the developer that, but I don't have it, I can't look at it.
I'm not asking you to look at it. I'm saying, ask them what, what kind of changes have been made so that the Butters have an opportunity to look at the new revised plans that he's proposed.
I think he wants to offer first. Your name, sir?
Um, Joe Cataldo, the applicant. A lot of the issues at the community meeting were also issues the peer review engineer had. So, they're, that's what they're revising now to do. And it's about making the drain, except more drainage and things of that nature. I don't know the specifics of the plan yet. It's still being engineered.
But you know what's meant to be changes that being made?
It's meant, it's being done to meet all the peer engineers' comments and reviews right now.
So, basically, the meeting with the neighborhood, most of the concerns were the same concerns the peer engineer, our peer engineer had with the plans. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I wasn't at that meeting, and, which is fine, cause we don't go to those because it influences people the wrong way. Um, so, the, our, our, the, the, the questions the neighborhood have are the same questions our peer engineers had for that neighborhood. And so, they have to, our peer engineer is gonna sign off if those changes happen correctly. Otherwise, he's gonna have more questions about it. So that it'll, it'll, we won't approve it, or we won't, we won't close a public hearing until all that information is completed before we'll opine on the situation to, to approve or disapprove it. Okay? All right. Yes, sir?
I am David Shaveloni. I live at twenty-nine Peter Road. Um, and this is something of an informational question for me. How is seventeen Anthony Road currently zoned?
It's residential.
Residential.
A? Residential A?
I think it's B.
I can check.
It might have been B. It's now A. I think it's forty thousand.
Is it forty thousand?
Yeah. Yeah.
Presuming since there was a house on it, it was the same as every other house in the neighborhood.
Right.
Before it was torn down. It is, and I presume since it's now going to be a road, not a building lot, is the zoning going to change for that piece of property?
For that property?
Yeah.
For 17?
Yeah.
There won't be, there won't be enough area left for them to build another house on, if that's what you mean?
Well, my question is, is is the applicant asking to change the zoning on that lot?
No.
And you can build a road on, on a building lot?
Yeah.
Roads are in residential areas, so you need a road to get to your home. So the roads are in residential areas.
Yeah, they're building this road so that they can build more houses.
It's not.
Doesn't change the zoning of the lot.
Yeah. Not unusual that a developer buys a lot to put their access through that lot. You know, for back, if, if there's property in the back behind the other houses, they have to, they have to drive a road in there. And it's their expense. And sometimes they do have to buy a house or just a lot, an empty lot, and then they put a road across it. It doesn't change that zoning. What, what?
It's RA.
It's RA. So it's residential A in there now. And I think when that subdivision went in, it may have been residence B. I think they're 20,000 square foot in there. Or something of that nature. I got a nod from one of the. So there's, there's smaller lots. So. Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay, Mr. Pierce, if you would do the continuance first of the public hearing.
All right, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to continue the public hearing for 17 Anthony Road and 346 Hour Havel Street until Tuesday. Which one are we going with?
Uh, April 18th.
April 18th, April 18th.
Is that okay with you, sir?
Oh, yeah, if it's ending too early, you can.
Yeah, yeah, make it as soon as possible because, so we can notify. And we keep, we keep the neighborhood well notified. And actually, the neighbors help out too, because we like notify two, three people and they send out informational.
April 18th, 2023.
I have a motion, is there? Oh, that was Ryan's, so moved it.
Oh, yeah.
So now you can, would you second it? I need a second.
Second.
I get a second. That was, that was.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, any more discussion from the members? Hearing none, roll call vote. Jeremiah?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye. Four in favor and David is absent. Mr. Pierce.
Ryan want to do this other motion or?
Ryan, do you want to do the other motion or Mr. Pierce to do it for you?
If you would, Mr. Pierce, please.
If you're ready.
I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to grant the requested extension of time in which to render a decision on the 17 Anthony Road, 346 Hour Havel Street definitive subdivision plan until June 30 of 2023.
I have a motion, is. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote. Jeremiah?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye. Four in favor. Uh, and David is absent at the time. So the next meeting is April the 18th at 8 o'clock. Not before, could be a little later. Okay? And we've got our decision is out to June the 30th now. Because we're running up on dates. Okay, folks? Yes, ma'am, you have a question?
I do just have a question as far as if there are any plans submitted, will there be time to review? Or would they be just posted online the day before the meeting? Or I'm just curious about the time.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see them more than a day before, because I like to review minutes, uh, review plans. We'd like to see them like Thursday before. What's that?
And we don't want them at the last minute. That doesn't work for us because we don't get a chance to review them.
Right. We don't like to come in here cold.
Yeah.
So should we just look at the website to see if they're posted? Or how do we get notified about new plans?
You can either look at the website or you can call County Park and then you can let me know if you're seeing anything.
Yeah, they're here five days a week, so.
Are there any time requirements in terms of prior to a meeting? How long you need to review plans? So there any?
We used to like to see them by, what, Wednesday before, Debbie? When they, when we did everything in paper. We do everything electronically now, so it's kind of easier for us to get the plans. So if we can get those plans to town hall or transmitted to town hall like the Wednesday before.
Yeah, we're hoping to get them done and, and by the end of this week.
By the end of this week. Okay, so you're actively working on them now? Okay. Okay, so they might be available next Monday. All right?
Do they go back out for peer review again or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's fun.
And it's, it's our engineer that we've chosen, not their.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just so, just so everybody would know.
I was just wondering if it was a new set of plans and thinking if we were reviewing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We got, we got to know what they want, they think about it.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
So Ryan and Jeremiah, if you could hang in there, we're gonna, we got that, the Greens and.
Good thing, Chris. So I'm going to continue. Well, you know, until they get it right, I guess. Or don't get it right and give up.
Yeah. That's what's happening every other time.
It's all about this.
Yeah.
Always, it's, Fran always has. Of course, they could always go for, for pork chop law. I think wouldn't worry you guys at all.
One big one, yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right, thanks. Make two big houses and we're all done.
There you go. There you go. Take care.
Okay, take care. I just want to make sure these people get a chance to see these revised plans.
Oh, well, they, absolutely. They're gonna, yeah.
There's little changes, I know. Let's see if they get it right. Do you have confidence in your engineer?
Yes. We do.
Peer review engineer, very good.
He, he grew up in this stuff.
I just can't see what they're proposing unless they make changes. Then they're not going to increase the flow of runoff.
Yeah. No, we understand.
It's impossible.
Don't worry, we're, we're worried about that. We're worried about that.
All right.
All right? All right, take care. All right, Warren.
We got four people, so.
Yes, we could, we could do, we're going to start with the Greens, I think. Since David is still there. Hi, David?
No. Ryan?
No, no.
Still here.
The applicant.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Ryan is there and Jeremiah is there. So we do have a, a four members now so we can, we can opine on the special permits issues. So Ryan, for your information, the Greens is looking to.
I didn't get that.
Add information to.
Do you want me to describe it?
Yeah, why don't you, Danielle? I'm, I'm dealing with my computer here.
They're looking for a couple of amendments to their special permit. The original special permit restricted how they could, uh, any outdoor watering. So we had the Water Department review their request and gave us a positive recommendation that now that we have increased capacity for Andover, the, the water restrictions that were in place back in the 80s are not really necessary anymore. So there is new language for the special permit that's been approved by the water superintendent. The question about the fire is more an agreement between the Fire Department and the Greens, but it seems to make things easier for the Greens if we actually put language into the special permit that says they're free to come to an agreement with the Fire Department and that the CPC does not need to control that aspect of it. So they, they're, they're looking to update the way they communicate with the Fire Department. I don't have the full detail of that because, to be honest, we, we don't really need the full detail of that. They just need permission to work out the arrangement with the Fire Department. And the Fire Chief has reviewed that and is fine with the condition that we propose. So I, David, I don't know if I've captured that correctly, but if you'd like to say more, please do. Yeah, you did great job.
She's good at this.
It's been a few years you've been working on this, so I think I got the hang of it now.
Yeah. So Ryan, do you understand what's going on? Yeah, muted.
He lost him.
No, he's there, I think. Jeremiah's there. Hi, Jeremiah. Ryan, are you there still? Mr. Carroll? Mr. Carroll? Maybe we lost, if we, if we lose him, then we can't do this.
Oh, no, no, hold on, he's, he's back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Unmute yourself right there, you go. So did, did you hear everything Danielle was talking about for the Greens? Ryan?
No, I did not. No, I did not. I've already stepped up for two months.
Okay.
Do you want me to just say it again?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the Greens is requesting a couple of amendments to their special permit from 1982. One of those changes would be to lift restrictions on certain types of outdoor watering, which the Water Superintendent has approved now, given that we have additional water capacity for Andover, which we did not have in 82. And the other change is to, that they're free to make other arrangements agreeable to the Fire Department for how their alarm systems communicate with, with the Fire Department. The Fire Chief is fine with that. So we've put some language in there for both the Fire Chief and the Water Department to approve. Both of them have given us memos indicating their approvals. So if you all agree to it, the, the special permit would be amended to, to make those changes.
Okay, Ryan?
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Okay, so is it all right if Mr. Pierce reads those motions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pierce?
Okay. I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to modify the special permit decision for the Thompson Club condominium trust, date stamped November 16th, 1981, with subsequent amendments on file as follows. Delete provision eight prohibiting the use of town water for outside watering purposes and replace it with the following. Town water shall be used only for inside domestic purposes and fire protection and for such outside watering purpose as is permitted under this condition. No town water shall be used for any outside watering purposes other than for hand watering, for example, watering key on hose, et cetera, but not installed irrigation system of plants and ornamentals. Neutral water shall not be used for irrigating alarms or any portion of the golf course. Water conservation devices shall be installed and maintained wherever feasible. Add a new provision of 14.1, 14.1e, which reads as follows. Thompson Club Unit Owners Trust may make amendments to their master deed as necessary from time to time in order to update fire protection procedures required or allowed by the North Reading Fire Department. Such changes may be made only with the written approval of the North Reading Fire Department.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Jeremiah. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll. Jeremiah?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye. That passes Ford and nothing, and David is absent. All right, thank you very much, David.
I'll draft a new letter for you tomorrow with the updated special permit conditions, and I also.
All right?